A little disappointing, there's so few of us, there's quite a bit on this agenda tonight, but. All right, it's 7:38 PM, gonna call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present Bob Shabbitt, John Teahan, and Rebecca Sinowski, welcome to the board Rebecca. First order business is election of officers. Are we compelled to do this tonight, Mike, with so few people?
That is a good question, I don't know that.
The election of officers?
Yeah.
Yes, you have to, someone has to move forward with your, at your next regular meeting with the new terms, so this is a. I suppose unless one of you makes a motion to table until the next time and authorizes someone to be the chair until such time.
Now, let's do it, let's, let's, let's turn around and elect them. I'll nominate Walter Peskrow to be, to be chair. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Terms of vice chair. I'll nominate John Teahan to be vice chairman.
I'll second that, gotcha, John.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks Walter.
Congratulations, John. All right, we need a secretary. I will nominate Bob, Bob Shabbitt to be secretary.
God, I'll try.
He'll do great.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Okay, congratulations, everyone. All right, we have no applications to be received tonight, we do have a public hearing. So, public hearing, PZ 21-17, temporary moratorium on cannabis establishment to consider the development regulations regarding the cultivation, sale, transport, and distribution of adult-use cannabis, applicant to Willing, Wellington Planning and Zoning Commission, so you want to kick this off, Mike?
Yep, so, um, there was legislation passed which requires towns to develop regulations, determine they'd like to prohibit it across town altogether, or, I suppose they could also do nothing related to adult use of cannabis, recreational cannabis, if we do nothing, we're obligated to treat it as a similar use, based on the zoning regulations, so the purpose of the temporary moratorium is to put the town in a position where we can develop regulations with the moratorium in place, so that we're not obligated to accept any applications while we develop the regs. So, the public hearing tonight is only related to whether we should adopt the moratorium or not, it's nothing to do with the development or the, or the way in which we'll regulate, and the language is such that if we have a Mac, we will set it out for a maximum of six months, if we develop regs sooner, then we can get rid of it more quickly.
Okay, so I guess with the, well. Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Sure can.
Yeah, for some, for some reason, I've, oh, there we go, okay, I pushed the wrong button and got the wrong screen. All right, so, let's start with the commission, any questions about this process, any comments?
No.
I think we kind of know how we got here, so.
Yeah, well, I just think it's the right thing to do right now, considering the state has no guidance, and let's not get blindsided by, you know, somebody coming and trying to start a business where we have to answer to it, I think this gives us a buffer to wait for the state and gives us some time to write some regulations that would placate the citizenry of Wellington.
Yep, I agree.
I agree too, I think it's the right approach.
And a lot of other towns are doing this as well, so, I think it kind of gives us some time to carefully consider this and how we want to move with the regulations.
Yep.
All right, any other comments from any other commissioners? All right, we'll open up to the public, any, anyone from the public have any thoughts, want to comment? Again, any, anyone from the public want to comment on this? I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that as a no. All right, I'll give it another thirty seconds before we close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, public hearing is closed. All right, Mike, what do we move next with this one, that we close the pub, we opened the public hearing, closed it.
Yeah, you can, you can, if you want to make a decision on the, on the enactment of the moratorium, you can.
I think we should, how's the commission feel about this tonight?
I think we should act, we've, we've talked about it, I think it's fairly clear to us, Mike's done a good job of presenting, you know, cause and effect with this, and I, I think we should move on it.
Agreed.
So, the only thing that I would say is, if, in your motion, if you could set an effective date, so that we know when the, the six months begins, looking at the calendar, by the time, if we get a legal notice scheduled fifteen-day appeal period, I would say, if we pick December fifteenth, which is just about four weeks out, as an effective date, that'll give us time to publish notice in the paper and have the fifteen-day appeal period.
Okay, as, as long as you feel that gives you enough time, Mike.
Yeah, that's just the fifty, that, that should be fine.
Okay.
All right, I could take a swing at a motion here if I want, gonna make a motion that a temporary, that the town of Wellington enact a temporary moratorium, effective December fifteenth on cannabis establishment to consider the development regulations regarding the cultivation, sale, transport, and distribution of adult-use cannabis.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, item F, new business, informal discussion Admiral Septic, the Litwin.
Okay, David is here, so, David's come into the office a couple of times and talked about sort of a proposal, something he's been considering, and it's, it's not necessarily traditional in the historic use of the property, and so before he starts moving in a direction of sort of determining if this is something that's viable for him, thought it'd be good for you guys to have an informal discussion to hear what he is thinking, and if you, if you think the approach makes sense, for the purpose of everybody here, this is an informal discussion which is allowed per Connecticut general statutes, it is informal and non-binding on both parties, has nothing to do with any future vote. So, it's, it's, it's very much an open discussion between you guys and Mr. Litwin.
Okay, David, you, you ready?
Absolutely, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Mike, the regs that I sent in, in the attachment with the email, did you distribute those, or?
So, I didn't, and I can tell you why now, or when we get into it.
Whatever.
So, so, my reading of that section, and just for the permissions purposes, there's a section in the regulations which talks about certain uses which need ZBA approval, and when I read that, I don't believe that that is applicable to what you're doing, because I don't think you're planning a facility on the property where there will be wholesale storage, so I would say you would not need that ZBA approval.
Yeah, I was actually surprised to see ZBA written in there, I expected it to be in front of the zoning commission rather than ZBA, anyways, let me get everybody up to speed. Um, let's see, I own Admiral Septic, we've been doing it for nine years under the certificate of zoning compliance, and right now, I'd like to go and balance out the business side, summer to winter, since winters tend to be slow, frozen ground, it's just not as much fun, I'd like to go and do bulk propane distribution, basically to homes, where using a bobtail, I end up filling between a hundred and twenty and thousand-gallon tanks, that would basically be a winter operation that would work out very well for us.
So, would you simply purchase the propane from a larger company and fill your truck?
Absolutely, I have been looking for design industrial property that would meet the needs for quite some time, and bring both businesses to that location. Haven't seen them on the market, I mean, I've got a couple of people that said, well, if I ever retire to Florida, I'll sell you something, but it hasn't happened yet. So, I'd like to keep the businesses into Wellington, because, you know, I live here, been here a long time. Uh, let's see, the one I'm proposing now is really more or less getting my foot into it, I mean, there'd be no changes in appearance of the property, no signage, none of that stuff, nothing different really than what I'm doing, other than I go out, fill up, pump a bunch of propane, come back with an empty truck, and then start the day over again, when it gets warm, I go out, fill up the truck with septic, go dump that, come home empty. So, that's pretty much the two scenarios there.
What's the current zoning on the, on the business, Mike?
So, um, yeah, I guess just to confirm, David, you're, as you had talked, we talked about, I mean, your, your existing property, which is, I believe, on Ruby, and then you mentioned some interest in another property elsewhere in town, are you thinking, so we're gonna, you're still thinking of acquiring that property?
Correct, it's, the current property owners are not ready to sell yet, they do intend on selling, just, they're not ready. So, that'll be a little bit of time, but then again, I mean, with any type of transaction like this, I anticipate it's going to be probably a year of just ramp-up time. Propane's a little different than septic, in that it's one of the more heavily safety-regulated businesses. Standard truck, you go in, you get your annual inspection, it's fairly easy to pass, you got lights, you got brakes, send you down the road. Propane, there's all sorts of additional inspections, both annual and every ten years, there's date coding on everything, it's actually a very well-run profession. So, I anticipate a little bit of ramp-up time.
So, the, the question I had though, what, what's the zoning on your current property and business? What zone?
But, Mike.
R eighty.
Yep.
So, it's residential?
So, he, yeah, so he's, he falls under a home occupation permit, which was issued many, many years ago, I believe, I remember correctly. So, he would, this would be, for all intents and purposes, for the time being, it would, it would, assuming the timeframes are what he states, the first step would be to sort of change the home occupation status to, to expand to propane with the long-term goal of transitioning to a, another property.
Yeah.
It's kind of what I'm hearing.
What's the capacity of the bobtail and gallons?
Twenty-eight hundred to three thousand, it's below the three-five hundred, that's expected to have the additional homeland security equipment on it.
Okay, so, let's just say three thousand for discussion's sake.
Easy man, yeah.
All right, Mike, flammable liquid in an R eighty zone, three thousand gallons potentially in a truck, what, do you see anything with that?
I mean, you have to talk to the fire marshal, a lot of times you'll see regulations, like what we were talking about with the ZBA and in Connecticut general statutes and elsewhere about propane facilities, so these trucks, they're not, he's not going to have a, a facility, he's not going to fill the trucks up on site, so, his trucks will be on his property, but he's, but he's not going to be storing anything there.
One truck, one truck.
I would anticipate actually two trucks eventually.
Okay, so six thousand, yeah.
Well, the other side of the coin is, it's not really for storing, you end up going and filling up pretty much on a daily basis.
Okay.
You know, I can't guarantee there won't be a few gallons, but again, the safety records of the trucks are impeccable right now.
I understand that, I'm just asking the question that, you know.
I presented to the neighboring people, the butters, and they have no real concern, actually, they were somewhere between balanced and enthusiastic, I think partially because they hate their current companies.
Yeah.
I'll see.
So, Mike, what do you, what do you see as the biggest hurdles in current regulation?
So, I just have to look to see how this would fit into the home occupation regulations that we have now, but I think that I can certainly reach out to the fire marshal to figure out if there's any, anything that he would have in either involvement in, or have any concerns, or, or requirements, things that he would look for, for, for this type of operation regardless of where it is. And then, if he, if he has, you know, some thoughts, or they're not insurmountable, I, I can circle back with Mr. Litwin, and we can look at the home occupation regs. Got too much open in front of me now.
I guess for me personally, that, that's who I'd like to hear the opinion of, the fire marshal, and, and so forth, you know, I'm not opposed to this, I.
Yep, I mean, it's just an, an extension of home business, really, what's, you know, what's happening on the property now, it's just that we're dealing with a flammable material that, yeah, I think it'd be good to have a little input from the fire marshal.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's what I'd like to, obviously, that these trucks are on the road all the time, we see them all the time making deliveries, they're in traffic, they're in, you know, wherever, pull up their residences all the time, filling tanks, so forth, so, you know, obviously, to David's point, they do have a good safety record, it's just, I, I would certainly like to hear the input of the fire marshal, though, and see if we're missing anything here.
Yeah, part of the regulations on this actually connect with some of the state regulations, fire regulations, and the fire marshal would need to do a review of it. What I was able to take away from reviewing them was there would be separation distances between parking of the trucks and structures, that was my biggest thing that I saw, although, you know, fire marshal may have a different take on it.
Okay. John, Rebecca, you have any thoughts on this one?
I, I agree with you and Bob Walt, that, let's, let's hear from the fire marshal, but I'm not opposed.
Okay, how about you Rebecca?
Same here, hearing from the fire marshal first, and what the official rules would be concerning the vehicle, etc.
All right, thank you. So, Mike, I, I think you kind of heard our position on it.
So, we'll reach out to the fire marshal, and then I'll also circle back with Mr. Litwin, let him know what those thoughts are, and then we'll go from there.
Very good, nice, nice speaking with you tonight, David.
Yeah, pleasure.
Take care, David.
Thank you.
All right, item B, under new business, affordable housing plan, introduction and demographic review.
Okay, so, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, we're sort of starting, beginning stages of the town's affordable housing plan, so, we, we've started working on kind of the front end, based on what we, we identified as the rough components of the, the plan. Sounds like somebody's sitting with an explosive.
S D of the fire, sorry.
Yeah.
So, or someone telling me to talk faster or less, so, Rachel, Rachel Burstein, who's here, she works with me, she and I have been working to kind of put this together, actually, so we, to try to, since, since these presentations are, or these meetings are recorded, and they go online, and we frequently have far more people viewing them afterwards than attending, we wanted to put together a PowerPoint to kind of very quickly go through this, and kind of show you what the initial data for Wellington says, and kind of the, what the, the bucket of information that we're going to use to start informing how we move forward with the process.
We're in a little trouble with your connection.
We have a quick PowerPoint to kind of go through. Is that any better?
That's better.
Um, Rachel, do you want to share the screen, or do you want me to try, although I guess I'm having some issues here?
Um, I can try to share, if I have permission to, I might not have permission, oh, I do, actually, okay. Oh, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so as Mike said, like, this is just an overview of the progress on the affordable housing plan so far, just like an introduction to it, and then together, we're like going to take a look at some of the demographic information that we've found. Um, so just like a refresher, this is like to fulfill a statutory requirement, Section eight thirty J of Connecticut general statutes requires that at least every five years municipalities prepare or amend and adopt an affordable housing plan. This plan shall specify how the municipality intends to increase the number of affordable housing developments in the municipality. So, we're completing the statutory requirement, of course, but we're also making a plan to create attainable, appropriate, and reasonably-priced housing to suit current and future needs of residents for Wellington. And then, these are just the components of what Wellington's affordable housing plan will have, so we start out with background on the requirement for affordable housing in municipalities in Connecticut, we go over what the statute is, and then we break down demographics of Wellington, we look at what the current population is, as well as the projected populations, that we know who and what to accommodate for, and then we go into an overview of the housing situation in town, we take a look at the housing stock, the age of units, things like that, and then we incorporate community survey results, so we go over what residents of Wellington had to say about the housing situation in town. And then the next section will be a plan of conservation and development and zoning regulation review, and then we recommend changes based on that review. The second-to-last section will be our steps, or Wellington's steps for an affordable housing plan, working with all of you to come up with those steps and agree on those steps, and then lastly is the plan's implementation, so we go over what the implementation will, will look like, and assign responsibilities and stuff like that. So, moving on to the demographics. Wellington's population per the 2010 US census was five thousand nine hundred and twelve, the median age is thirty point three, which trends a lot lower than a lot of other Connecticut municipalities, the average for Connecticut, I think, is like thirty-nine. Um, so, this is also reflected in some of the largest age groups, being younger populations, like the ten-to-twenty-four-year-old age range, the twenty-five-to-twenty-nine-year-old age range, and then the third largest would be the fifty-to-fifty-four-year-old age range, and you can see in the bottom rate chart how big that twenty-to-twenty-nine-year-old age group is, about thirty-one percent of Wellington's population. Household size is two point three seven, which has declined from what it was in two thousand, which is two point five two. And then the projected population is, or the future population is projected to decline, or continue declining, moving forward in the next twenty years. In terms of housing stock, there are two thousand eight hundred and seven units in total, sixty-one point five percent of units are single-family detached structures, around ten percent of these are structures with ten-to-twenty-nine units in them, twelve point four percent have twenty or more units, and then what's left is either two, three, four, or five-to-nine unit homes, or mobile homes. Seven and a half percent of units are assisted, governmentally assisted through CHFA or USDA mortgages, or through tenant rental assistance, and then in terms of ownership, sixty-two percent of all units are owner-occupied, thirty-two percent are occupied by renters, and six percent are vacant. Next, looking at the age of units, most of Wellington's units were built after nineteen seventy, we look at this because an aging housing stock, as we all know, is not a good thing. And in terms of building permits, there was a decrease in building permits between nineteen ninety and twenty seventeen. There are nineteen building permits issued in the year nineteen ninety, versus only three issued in twenty seventeen. Affordability in Wellington. Over half of renters are cost-burdened, so that means they pay more than thirty percent of their income in housing costs, and then for owners, about a fifth of owners pay thirty percent or more in housing costs, and the graphs show a more detailed breakdown of that. Moderate burden is like if you pay thirty to fifty percent of your income in housing costs, and then severe burden is fifty percent or greater. Um, median rent in town is one thousand one hundred, one hundred and twenty-three dollars, and median home value is two hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars, and both of these are declining. But then looking towards our next steps, we'd like to put out a community survey sometime soon, and get that rolled out, so we can incorporate those results. We also will do a, a review of the plan of conservation, development, and zoning regs, to look at what some of the barriers are in affordable housing in town, and then we're beginning plan drafting. Um, so I think that's it for me, unless Mike has anything to add.
So, basically, the next step, as she mentioned, is the, probably the community survey, so, at the next meeting, I can, I can present to you the questions that we'll have prepared, as far as what we suggest, and kind of why, and it's all about asking questions that'll give us data that we can actually use to, to gain impressions from, so, we have a, a survey that we put together, it's not incredibly long, that we'll want to distribute, so, if we can get that taken care of, you know, our next meeting, and then get that open, we can start. and then, uh, get that open, we can start, um, working through some of the actual narrative components. Um, and looking at kind of everything, all the, the various data points that are here. A lot of the graphics that are throughout this PowerPoint here come from a number of different entities. We have the twenty ten census. We have twenty twenty census, the partnership for strong communities. Um, there is the Department of Housing has some data. There's one that I'm missing. Uh, there's two, uh, we'll formally circ, the N C T has the town profiles. So we'll start kind of looking at all that information. Um, again, to try to gain a perspective on where we need to go, um, and and, and what the barriers are. And, and then from there, what we can do about it. And certain things are easier to solve than others. If we have our zoning regulation that's extremely prohibitive to some of this type of housing, or, or it adds a lot of costs to, to housing development, then that's easy to fix. But if it turns out it's really related to potentially soil not being overly supportive of septic or, um, you know, something along those lines, it's a little bit harder to fix, you know, Wellington, we don't have sewer. Um, so we'll start laying those things out, looking at what priorities are, and then who, who needs to be involved in moving those, that ball further down the field.
What's our timeline, Mike, in terms of like getting the survey out, getting it back, uh? You know, start.
I think we probably want to have the survey open for a few weeks. So, um, if we can, if we can get it, um, reviewed, um, as soon as possible would be good. You know, we have a, a set of questions, like I said, that, that we've designed. I, I guess if you don't, I mean, I can certainly share them with you via email and you can respond with comments that you have to me directly. Um, and we don't have to wait till the next meeting. Like I said, a lot of this is about gauging the, the resident sentiments towards affordable housing. Do they understand what affordable housing actually is? Do they, do they understand what affordable housing in Wellington means? Um, and that we already have over seven percent of our housing stock as restricted. Um, you know, do they, do they understand that as compared to many towns in this area, we are miles ahead of where a Taland or a Bolton or Coventry or some of these other municipalities are. Um, because once we know kind of what their thoughts are about that, we then start to look at, how do they feel about housing stock? Do they feel that Wellington has the housing stock that it needs? Do they feel that it has the housing stock to support the young people in their family or the, the aging people in their family? Are they looking for a housing type that perhaps we don't have? They want to age in place, but we don't, we don't provide. So, um, we want to understand what they think about the sort of housing status now.
Okay, could you, uh, share that with the commission prior to the next meeting? I think we'd probably like to read that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Can certainly send that out. And if you have comments and if folks are comfortable with it, then then we can just get it published that much more quickly. And if we have a lot of discussion, we can add it to the agenda for a, a topic at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Hey, Mike, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Uh, when you're going to send that survey or have that survey available, I wonder if some of those things that you mentioned, do people understand what affordable housing means? I was wondering if that could be something that is defined so that they can see that. So if they have those questions, there's, it's, it, it, you're, you've made good points and things, unless things are specified, they mean different things to different people. Uh, thi- this is kind of like when we were first talking about, um, open space subdivisions and such. You know, people got all worked up that the development, we, by changing that Wellington was going to become a Manchester or something like that. So I, I think it's important to take and have some definitions of some of those terms that you mentioned in that survey so they can see what, how, how it's being defined.
Yep. So the way that we have a structure now is that we, there is a, a bit of a, uh, an explanation. So we kind of work through what those, those numbers are, um, to make sure that they understand that when we use the term affordable housing, it's tied very specifically to a number for Willington.
Yes.
And we're not, we're not calling affordable housing in Wellington what's Manchester or New Britain or Hartford or Bridgeport. Um, so we'll include that so that we're, we know that we're all on the same page as far.
I, I think that's important.
Yeah, that, Mike, I would definitely, um, you know, make a mention of the USDA loans. I was, um, surprised to find out that my house is affordable housing because I got a USDA loan.
Are, are the C H F A loans considered affordable too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So that, that, that's important because a lot of people, they bought their first house that way or whatever.
Yeah. And so part of this could be that we need to make sure that local realtors understand that these dif- various loan options work because perhaps they can work with buyers and if the buyers through these options can afford more house, it means maybe that house will last them more than five or seven years and they have to go somewhere else. So it, it may be a whole number of things. And, um, so we'll include all that.
Uh, it's just important to manage like the impression of this and what, you know, just putting some, uh, some context behind it helps.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions from any, uh, any of the commission? All right, I think we're good with this one. Mike, so on to, uh, see, no unfinished business age approval of minutes, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Anyone want to make a motion on that?
Uh, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, minutes approved from October nineteenth. No correspondence, Mike?
Uh, no.
All right, public comment. The commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak. No business can be conducted here. Or can any comments be made about any items on the agenda? Anyone from the public have any comments? Okay.
Well, actually.
Go ahead, Ralph. It's nice to see you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, it's, it's an agenda item. I'm just going to throw out one comment and we'll see where it lands. Um, with respect to affordable housing, my question for everyone is how does the transient population uh, in our apartments associated with UConn affect the big picture? And I'll just drop that one on you and you all can think about it.
All right. Thank you, Ralph. Okay. Staff report discussion eight twenty-four, the septic at the Old Town Hall.
So, uh, at the last meeting, um, we talked about the eight two four, uh, referral and the, the, the septic project, the Old Town Hall, and the commission had some questions. Um, so I, I've asked Erica to, uh, attend. She knows the project much more intimately than I do. The, the things that we identified as, as points of clarification were number one, review of a site plan. Um, and number two, um, was there going to be, uh, any impact to the town green either visually or, um, something that would restrict the use?
Yeah, I think, I think the main thing we wanted to see a site plan. I, I don't think we're trying to hold this up with that. I think that was the overriding concern. We just wanted to see what's it look like on, on, on a site plan.
Mike, I think you have, did, did you share that with the, the board? Um, what I shared was the application, um, for the Steve Grant and in there is, um, the engineered design um, from Carl. So it is, you know, concept design. We have to go out to bid on the whole project. Um, I don't know if you have that up, Mike, if you can share that. And there would be no, uh, restrictive use of the green. So, uh, things that typically happen annually, the car show and the flea market would still be able, um, to be held.
Drive on this?
Absolutely.
Okay, this is like midway down. This is in a different position than it. I think we had the impression it was going to be. Quiet the dog. All right. Okay, I, that looks reasonable to me.
Yeah, they are, um, I believe they're going to be concrete, um, structures that be down four to five feet. Um, which would allow for still driving on the green for the car show and then available use for the, um, flea market. Those are important to us that the greens still be able to be utilized in the traditional manner.
So they're going to excavate the road a bit, you know, to get across. They, they have the, uh, we're going to put in a new tank and pump chamber, leaching fields on the green.
Can I speak to the design? Hello?
What's that?
Dave Litwin here. I've seen thousands of septics we've inspected. I've seen lots of designs. If this is four to five feet down, septics are oxygen machines. They need air. Don't, doing concrete galleries is totally fine. Bring them up close to the surface, four to five feet down, you'll see a very short life of the field. All the designs we end up putting in eighteen inches or less. They need oxygen. So either you'd have to vent it or provide some other method because you end up having anaerobic bacteria that deep and they tend to fall off the field pretty quick. Just our take, we've only seen a few thousand.
That's, uh, good, uh, good commentary there, David, that's we do for a living. So.
Yeah.
All right, that, any, any questions from the commission?
Uh, I just have one. With the sighting of that, uh, leach field, in the future, if there was ever a need for those, for the other two houses along that side of the green to utilize, uh, a leach field under the, uh, green, would that still provide them enough, uh, area to do that?
That's not something I'm prepared to answer.
Uh, it's just a question I think should be, uh, uh, considered. Considering how small those lots are.
Just a little technical background. If you got thirty or lin- thirty linear feet, we've been able to put them on lake lots for three bedroom homes. So, there's enough room on the property for a thirty linear foot run. They'll probably be able to do them on their own lots unless the soils are horrible.
Okay, no, I'm, you know, just, uh, just trying to understand. Thank you.
Yeah. They crossed a couple extra bucks, they can fit.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
All right, well, Mike, I, I think we've kind of provided our eight twenty-four review of this. I, I, you know, I gotta move it forward now.
Yep, so we need a motion from you guys. And it's just a, it's basically, again, and, and, um, for background, an eight twenty-four is required by the Connecticut general statutes when, when the town, um, legislative body is doing certain things. They're installing a road, buying, selling property, anything related to utilities, et cetera, um, real estate easements, the whole nine yards. So the septic system from the Old Town Hall um, will be on the town green. Both properties owned by the town, but it will require an easement. And so because the easement, even though it's in favor of the town by the town, um, requires the eight two four referral. If a negative referral is, is provided by this commission, it requires a super majority vote by the Board of Selectmen to basically move forward with the project. So, um, that is why the eight two four is required and um, i- i- if what will happen, I guess, if you guys don't feel that, that this is um, something you can look positively on and, and the, the test, the review that you're, you're providing is basically whether you feel that this is going to be in conflict with the town's P O C D. Um, and, and, um, that, that's sort of where the negative or positive referral would come from.
I'm going to make a motion to make a positive referral on the eight twenty-four review for the septic at the Old Town Hall.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. And I, I think David did bring up some interesting points that maybe want to be considered with depth and everything, you know, just something to think about.
All right, thank you all, and I will share those, um, thoughts. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. All right, item L, Mike, uh, executive session pursuant to CGS one dash two hundred six E to include, uh, Mike D'Amato, C. Roberts, C. Wachinski, out of Wellington, C. Benson, P. Peston, Ruby Road Associates, J. Hope, Alter Pearson. What's this?
So this is an executive session.
I know what executive session is, but.
So, um, I'm gonna start a, um, a Zoom room and I will include everybody here. So you should get a, a pop-up. Yep, and it will let you in. So.
Do you need to vote to actually go into this, Mike?
Can I, yeah, can I interrupt?
So I'm going to make a motion. Who's talking?
Uh, this is Phil Passon with the Richmond Company and Corey Benson.
Hi.
Hi, I believe we were on the agenda. And if you guys are going to go into executive session, maybe we should schedule another meeting.
You, you're, you are part of the executive session.
Oh, we are? Okay.
You are. Yep.
Okay, very good.
I'll, I'll move that we go to executive session.
I'll second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Okay, so I'm going to pause the recording. I'm going to open the room up. And so for anybody who's not, um, included in the executive session list, the meeting will come back out of executive session at the end. Meeting's not going to shut down.
All right, we're back.
All right, we're back. All right, I'm going to make a motion to end the executive session.
Second.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, that leaves us with, uh, adjournment. All right, it is, it is, uh, let's see, it's eight fifty-nine P M., uh, meeting adjourned.
It's been a pleasure.